Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the month of July 2019. The Board of Commissioners did meet in executive session from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. to interview a number of extremely, extremely well-qualified individuals to serve, potentially serve on the Historical and Planning Commission. I would now ask our Township Manager, Dave Berman, to please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Here.
Mr. Aliva?
Here.
Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. McGarrett?
Here.
Dr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
All please rise and join our Chief of Police, John Viola, in the Pledge of Allegiance. Agenda item number two, Appointments, Public Works Department.
What is it named?
Agenda item number two.
Okay. Motion to appoint Danny Marianni, Acting Public Works Director, to the position of Public Works Director.
Seconded by Commissioner Wexler. Any questions? Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Andy, I think Danny's sitting over here in the corner.
First off, I'd just like to say thank you again for your vote of confidence in me, and I'm looking forward to continuing on the way we've been working. A few other thank yous, all the directors who've helped me with this transition, gentleman behind me, my teacher, my mentor, one of the greatest guys that I know, Amy, couldn't have done it without you, John, Joe, Kelly, all your help, thank you very much, appreciate it, looking forward to working.
Thank you.
701.
Dan, we couldn't be more pleased. Dan, I think, and I think I speak for the board when I say we couldn't be more pleased with your appointment, it was a recommendation by our Township Manager, but you've had some tough shoes to fill in Doc Doherty, you're off to a good start, and you've been extremely responsive, and you've got a really first-class operation that you're managing, great group of dedicated employees, so we appreciate your service and their service, so thank you. Next on the agenda is the Township Order Update, Ross Anderson.
I've reviewed the expenditures and warrants for this meeting, I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction.
Thank you, Ross. Agenda item number four is our Police Department Crime Update, given by Chief John Viola. Thank you.
The Chief's report for the month of June 2019, criminal arrests 22, juvenile arrests three, 171 traffic citations, 27 non-traffic citations, 241 written warnings, and 35 automated parking tickets. It's zero robberies, one burglary in the 800 block of Cricket, someone entered a unlocked rear porch, and the bicycle was removed from the porch. We had a burglary attempt in the unit block of Merrill Avenue, window was pushed up, nobody got in the house. We had one arson, 1601 Darby Road, in the library. Investigation revealed a group of juveniles ignited some cotton balls on fire in the rear corner of the library or in a bookshelf. They then attempted to extinguish the fire and fled the library when adults came into the area. The investigation into this is still ongoing, pending several more interviews, there are videos, and our detectives are on top of it. One aggravated assault at East Darby and Eagle, the bus shelter, police observed a suspect who he knew to have an active bench worn out for his arrest. The officer approached the suspect, he began to run away, but was tackled by the officer. The suspect then began to actively fight with the officer, attempting to grab his duty weapon. Backup officers arrived, the suspect was taken into custody, he was charged with aggravated assault and drug-related offenses. Sex offense, one, at the YMCA, police received a report of an adult, male interacting with his child and another child in the pool area in an inappropriate manner, the investigation is ongoing. Motor vehicle theft, zero, and I'm happy to report we had two attempted thefts and thefts from autos. So, the patrol has been doing an outstanding job, they have made multiple arrests, but the problem is, like I've stated before, the next group comes in and starts a little earlier again. But happily, you know, we were in the high 30s in the past couple of months, it's down to two. In the past couple of weeks, it has peaked a little bit, but not as high as it's been in the past, so. We had one weapons offense, 400 block Austin School officials reported a second grade student brought a pocket knife to school, the matter was handled at the school level. With cars entered down, we have bicycle thefts are up, and there's five of them, and I attribute that to the time of year when kids leave their bikes out, they don't lock them. K9 usages, we have five K9 usages in the month of June, and, I'm sorry, make it nine K9 usages in the month of June, that's the report.
Any question for the Chief? Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Agenda item number five is Commissioner Committee Updates, any Commissioner Committee update?
President.
Commissioner Siegel.
Yeah, I just want to report that the Township Property Committee met in an executive session on June 25th to discuss possible uses of the Brookline School property. We will be then presenting the various options to the Board of Commissioners in an executive session that is scheduled for August 5th, and then based upon any discussions there, we anticipate being able to make a public presentation as to what the preferable options may be.
On the 12th, the following week?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other?
Andy, I just wanted to mention that we brought up Public Works, and I had a constituent of mine call me the other night in the storm, lightning hit a tree, broke a big branch off, and boom, today Danny and Danny Wentz were around there with the tree crew, and it's all cleaned up, and they couldn't believe how fast the township took care of things.
Thank you, Jimmy. Any other? Okay, turning to agenda item number six, which is the Citizens Forum, we don't have any registered speakers this evening, but we do allot 20 minutes for anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an agenda item, and if it's not related to the agenda, you'll have an opportunity to speak under Agenda Item Number 19, which is a continuation of the Citizens Forum. So, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on an agenda item? Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. Please, please come forward. Could you just please state your name and your address, please?
My name's Jessica Frankel, I live on 44 East Turnbull Avenue in Havertown.
Okay.
I just wanted to add some remarks when it comes to item number 11 on the agenda, modifying the provision to require the reporting of lost and stolen firearms. I just want to commend Commissioner Siegel for bringing this up for a vote, and I just want to add my two cents that doing a lot of research into the area of gun violence prevention, the argument we hear a lot of the time is that we cannot prevent illegal guns from getting into circulation, and this is one of the main ways that we can do that, because most of the times when these guns are used in crimes, they are told after they're recovered that they have actually, "No, that was my gun, I lost it," or "Somebody stole it," many days, months, or years after the fact, and I don't know about you, but I carry my cell phone with me everywhere, and if I lose it for even five minutes, I'm wondering where it is, and if we have somebody who has a weapon that can be used with deadly force, it's all the more important that people are required to report the loss or somebody stealing that item in an orderly fashion and a timely fashion. I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. I think we all share your view, and thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on an agenda item? Okay. Agenda item number seven is Boards Commission Updates, privileged to have Jason Conway, the new Chairman of the Human Relations Commission here this evening, like to introduce himself, and his Vice Chair, Kathy Dawson.
Good evening, my name is Jason Conway. As you may know, as of July 1st of this year, I succeeded Jennifer Leith as the Chairperson of the Havreford Township Human Relations Commission. I'm here with my colleague Kathy Dawson, Kathy is the new Vice Chair, she replaces Joanne Glusman. Kathy and I are longtime residents of Havreford Township, have an accent, I'm not that long a resident, but I am more than a decade here, Kathy, I believe, is over 20 years a resident of the township. We're committed to the important work that the HRC has been doing and will continue to do. We're here to say a special thank you to Jennifer Leith and Joanne Glusman, under their leadership and stewardess, stewardship of the HRC, over the last year and a half, we've had some very important discussions, as you know, within the township, and we're going to continue to do that. The HRC has been and will continue to be in good hands. We extend our hand to the Commissioners and also to township residents and businesses, we appreciate the broad array of support that the HRC has received and continues to receive, including from yourselves. We look forward to continuing our meetings, our next meeting is September 18th at 7:00 p.m. in the Township Building, we invite all to attend, and at this time, unless there's any questions, we appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you for your service, and, I'm sorry, you would like to say something?
Just thank you.
Thank you for being here, and please extend our thanks to Jen and Joanne as well for their service.
We do, thank you.
Agenda item number eight, Approval of Minutes, the regular meeting of June 10th, 2019. Mr. D'Amelio?
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 10th, 2019.
Seconded.
Approved by Commissioner D'Amelio, seconded by Commissioner Aliva, any discussion, edits, questions on the minutes? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed or any abstentions? Minutes approved. Agenda item number nine, Approval of Warrants, Commissioner and Vice President Holmes.
Sorry, we're...
Nine.
That's all right, Mr. Siegel was telling me something very important. I move we approve warrant number seven of 2019 totaling $4,346,021.56. And that comprises the General Sewer Fund payroll for June 13th of 2019 in the amount of $980,240.82. General Sewer Fund payroll for June 27th, 2019 in the amount of $642,471.16. General Fund dispersments, number seven, 2019 in the amount of $1,508,270.11. Sewer Fund dispersments, number seven of 2019 in the amount of $41,475.31. Community Development Block Grant Fund dispersment, number seven of 2019 in the amount of $70,137.87. Capital Projects Fund dispersment, number seven of 2019 in the amount of $1,092,692.25. A credit card statement ending June 27th, 2019 in the amount of $10,734.4.
Seconded. Seconded by Commissioner Wexler, any questions or discussion?
Just two comments, Mr. President, first, our Township Boarder has been through these warrants, any questions, these warrants have triggered for him, have been raised to and answered to his satisfaction by our Township personnel, and I haven't said this in a while, but I'll remind our listening and watching audience that when we refer to the credit card statement ending June 27th, or any credit card statement each month when we do the warrants, there are a variety of projects that the Parks and Rec Department do, they buy tickets for events, they have to prepay certain things, that credit card statement gets paid in full every month, so I do not want any of our constituents to fear that our township is paying 23.5% interest to any credit card company, but instead is just making advance payments, which we have to do if we're buying Broadway show tickets or bus tickets to somewhere, or tickets for Hershey Park, or for any of the ski resorts, or any of the variety of things that the Township Recreation Department provides. So, that is, every once in a while, it's worth reminding everybody that that's why that's there, and every month it is paid in full.
Thank you.
With all the points, Tim Denny's going to fly around the world next year, evidently, yeah. So, other than that, it is my recommendation that we approve warrant number seven.
Any questions from the Board? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or any abstentions? The warrants are approved. Agenda item number 10, Ordinance Number P11, 2019, Traffic, Electric Charging Stations, Section, Chapter 175, Section 1, Section 32, Parking on Public Property, Second Reading, Commissioner Siegel. Why don't we move this, or do the tweaks after we...
Motion to adopt the Second Reading of Ordinance P11, 2019, Amending Chapter 175 Vehicles and Traffic Parking on Public Property by Establishing a Protocol for Electric Charging Stations.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Holmes. Any discussion or questions or edits, decisions you'd like to offer?
Well, the item that was in the agenda, we've proposed to amend, let me explain a little bit of the history here so everyone understands. After last month's meeting, I reviewed, as Chair of the Ordnance Committee, the ordinance as it was proposed, and discovered that there was a difficulty with the existing ordinance that actually only permitted township vehicles to park on the township lots, and didn't permit anyone else from doing so, which obviously has never been enforced. So, we revised the ordinance to continue to allow public to use electric charging stations, but also defined it so that the parking lots here may be used for township-related business, which is defined as, you know, using, coming in for the township, being at a sporting event, using the stadium, or a township event, so that it would be consistent with how the property has been used and enforced in the past. And so those changes are still consistent with, I believe, the entire spirit of the original motion, just clarifying, because we certainly weren't preventing people from parking here. So, I don't know how, if we need to...
So, you would accept your own amendments?
Well, I, someone would...
I think Commissioner Siegel started to ask me how would we do that, I mean, I don't know that that constitutes a substantial change.
Right.
I think we just go forward with the amendments.
As long as you accept it, and Commissioner Holmes would accept those changes.
Yeah, right.
I do, and I think the key, the important thing is that the Solicitor notes, for the record, that the ordinance we adopted a month ago, it was the Board's intent to do exactly what we are doing now, and therefore the corrections were simply remedial, no way, expanded our rights or other people's obligations, or pose greater fines or anything like that, the kind of things that would make something a substantial change, and then I don't believe there has to be any change in the motion, removing this ordinance.
Okay.
And we all have it, right?
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this proposed ordinance, Second Reading? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Just unrelated to this, I know that the electric charging stations are now been installed, when will they become operational? Amy, I'm just curious...
They are operational right now, the public stations are right along Veterans Field right here, they are operational right now, and until September 30th, the township is in a promotional period, if you will, so there is no charge to users of the stations.
So, I was wondering, I looked at the stations, I didn't see any way to pay, so what's, is it going to be like a credit card, I'm sorry?
The stations are networked to the ChargePoint Network, which is the premier way to do this in the electric vehicle world, so a person would log on to the ChargePoint Network, register with them, and the ChargePoint Network is actually pretty interesting, you log on to the app, and it shows you our station, and whether it's available, it'll light up green, or whether it's in use, it'll light up red, you can get on a waitlist for it, and that's where your credit card info goes in through the ChargePoint Station, and then on a bi-weekly basis, they remit to us any charges that come to us.
Okay, so there's no point, there's no point of sale on the actual...
There is not.
That's great.
And like I said, it'll be a promotional period of no charge until September 30th.
Thank you, Amy. Exciting news. We'll now turn to Agenda Item Number 11, Ordinance Number P12, 2019, Amending Chapter 83, Fireworks, Firearms, and Other Weapons, Second Reading, Commissioner Siegel.
Motion to adopt the Second Reading of Ordinance P12, 2019, Amending and Supplementing the General Laws of the Township of Havreford, Chapter 83, Firearms, Fireworks, and Other Weapons, Section 83-1, Discharge Prohibited Exceptions by Modifying the Provision to Require Reporting of Lost or Stolen Firearms.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Aliva, any additional discussion or question about...
Question, I didn't see, there's no penalty, what is the penalty for failure to...
There is none, it's a duty to report, is that correct, Chief?
I thought there was.
The penalty's elsewhere in the title, in the chapter, it just isn't in this provision, but it directs you to another place, and I forget it's...
Right, that's...
Can you find that? That's not what your understanding, Chief?
I thought there was no provision for a penalty in there, that was my understanding of that. It's just not written in that particular ordinance.
Because it does make sense to have a penalty attached to it, but I don't know how you would ever enforce it.
There is no penalty in there.
So, it's a duty.
I mean, part of, part of, part of the creation of this document, in my understanding was it is that this is, unfortunately, one of the limited areas that municipalities have in terms of gun, and we should not publicly be referring to this as gun regulation, it's an ordinance that we're passing in terms of lost and stolen, and it's lost and stolen property that we're making a specific requirement for within this township, and that's, you know, it's consistent with what current state law is coming out of Harrisburg.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I don't mean to be contrary, but it's in my nature.
This is true.
We're making changes to 83.1, but 83.2 is the section of our code that covers violations of 83.1, and that's a fine of not more than $600, and cost of each violation, and our payment, default payment, subject to imprisonment for 30 days. So, any violation of 83.1, which includes the failure to report a gun, is covered by penalty provisions that are not in our amendment, because they're in our chapter, 83.2. We actually did talk about this when we talked about this the last time, and it just doesn't belong in this section, because it's...
But it's not in this specific, I understand what you're doing, but, okay.
There, if someone fails to report a stolen gun, they are subject to, in Havreford Township, 83.2. Now, they want to go to the Supreme Court over that, they can, but as of right now, we're passing, we're making an amendment to our ordinance that makes it unlawful not to report a stolen weapon, and they are subject to the violations and penalties of 83.2.
Do you agree with that? Do you agree with that, Jim?
Yeah, I agree with that interpretation.
Yeah.
Good, so it has some teeth.
It has some teeth.
Has some teeth.
The teeth could be pulled out, but...
It's not really teeth, but...
I say what I said 100 times, when some court tells us we can't do that, that's when we won't do it.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions or comments on this? If not, please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yeah, just for clarification now, I was in the back, but require reporting lost or stolen firearms, is that what we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay, vote yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Agenda Item Number 12, Ordinance Number P14, 2019, Traffic, First Reading, Vice President Holmes.
Yeah, Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance, sorry, let me get it, Ordinance Number P14, 2019, Establishing Traffic Restrictions on the Following Highway, the Installation of a Special Purpose Parking Sign in Front of 727 Humphreys Street in Ardmore.
Seconded.
Moved by Commissioner Holmes, seconded by Commissioner Aliva, any questions on this proposed ordinance? First reading, please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Agenda Item Number 13, Resolution Number 2143-2019, Township Investment Policy, I would ask our ever-capable Assistant Township Manager and Finance Director, Amy Cuthbertson, to please provide the Board with an explanation.
Well, first, let me make the motion.
Oh, you want to do that first, okay.
Yeah, why don't we, I move we adopt Resolution Number 2143 of 2019, Establishing a Formalized Township Investment Policy to Provide Structure and Strategy Regarding the Management of Non-Pension Funds of Havreford Township.
Moved by, seconded by Mr. Wexler. Can he second it? Okay. Now, Amy, it's your...
What this is, this is formalizing many statutory...
Your mic on?
I believe so.
Yeah, I can hear, I can hear.
But no, good. This policy is formalizing many existing policies that are in place, but a bit of housekeeping, putting it all in one document. Rating agencies like to see formal policies when we go out for borrowing, so this was one that we didn't have, that I wanted to formalize, so the next time we go out for borrowing, they might notice that we did this and look upon us favorably. So, many of the requirements with what we can and can't borrow are statutory or governed by the Home Rule Charter, so we didn't change any of that, of course. We did add two, two more formalized aspects, one of which is that I will report to the Finance Committee the investment returns on a quarterly basis, so they're aware of them, and also is that we will look to diversify and not keep more than 50% of our deposits in any one banking institution, just to spread it around a little bit, and like I said, diversify and protect. So, they were the two, you know, larger aspects of it, otherwise it's just housekeeping and formalizing existing policies.
I think for the public's benefit, our township has a AA1 rating, which is second highest rating, we're trying to achieve a AAA rating by the rating agencies, which would enable us to borrow at probably, you know, I don't know how many basis points less, but it would provide significant savings in terms of interest expense, to the extent that we can lower borrowing costs, so. Anybody else have anything to add or questions regarding to this? If not, please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Resolution Number, Agenda Item Number 14, Resolution Number 2144-2019, Traffic Calming Measures.
Mr. President, Motion to Adopt Resolution 2144, 2019, Authorizing the Installation of Temporary Traffic Calming Systems on Township-Owned Roadways During PennDOT's Replacement of the Ardmore Avenue Bridges in Havreford Township.
Seconded. Seconded by Commissioner McGarrett. Just for clarification, some explanation on this particular resolution, so the Ardmore Avenue Bridge is closing a week from today, which I think this Board recognizes will have significant impact on, particularly in the 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th wards, with significant, even though PennDOT will be putting up detour signs, we all know that not all drivers are going to follow those detour signs, they're going to be cutting through neighborhoods, and unfortunately probably blowing through stop signs and the like. So, this is one effort, in talking with Dave Berman and the Chief of Police, John Viola, Amy Cuthbertson, his recommendation is that we have the opportunity for residents who live on streets that could be, come, cut-through streets, to petition for a, for temporary speed bumps, okay? And it would require, as our current ordinance does, it requires that 80%... require, as our current ordinance does, it requires that 80% of the resident owners accept that these speed bumps be located, maybe depending on the length of the street, it could be one speed bump, it could be two. So they have to accept, 80% of the residents have to accept that. They also have to accept the fact that a speed bump will, could be placed in front of their property, and they do create some noise. If a UPS truck or something ever goes over it, it does create some noise. So people have to recognize, it's not all upside by speed bumps, there's some, some downside. So that's an additional condition that was added. So, but we've, and the second motion is, is part of this, is to fund, to fund this, these speed bumps and other mitigation measures, whether they be new signage, whatever it might be, to try to, try to mitigate. Unfortunately, PennDOT does very little in terms of their mitigation. They have the ability to control the timing of a traffic light. We maintain them, but they control the timing. So that's where they can have their, some impact in terms of trying to tweak timing to allow more cars to go through certain intersections that are kind of, you know, congested or choke points. But this is our attempt to be proactive in, in responding to, I think, what's going to be a very, a very long and kind of a nightmare year for, for, for a lot of people in this township, particularly in the third, fourth, fifth, and sixth wards. So I enthusiastically recommend that we support this resolution. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
I, a couple of comments for, for the audience. With these temporary speed bumps, we use those on Upland Road. We had a lot of complaints from, from the residents when using the temporary speed bumps in front of the houses that they're at, when landscaping trucks would go over, cars are constantly stopping and then re-accelerating over those humps. A lot of noise going on. And in a tight neighborhood like, like Upland Road is, we had complaints from the people who were at that juncture. So be careful what you wish for, you just might get it.
Good. Appreciate that. That's why we're, when people sign the petition, they're signing off on the fact.
Right, exactly. And just keep that in mind, because if that thing is sitting in front of your house, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be noisy.
Yeah, unfortunately, when it comes to traffic calming measures, there's very limited options. I mean, we have speed enforcement, obviously, which is difficult because we don't have access to radar, which is, we're the only state in the whole United States that doesn't allow municipalities to use radar, which would enable us to issue a ticket for anybody going 6 miles an hour or more over a speed limit. And now we have to measure distance measuring, right, Chief? So basically, it's a 10 mile an hour leeway. So somebody has to be going basically 36 in a 25 mile an hour zone before our, we can even issue a ticket. And also, you know, stop sign enforcement. And the Chief and I have had conversations about that, and certainly are going to do, be doing a lot of stop sign enforcement and trying to do what we can.
In some of these neighborhoods, we have, you know, you see 15 mile an hour signs in the neighborhoods, and those are unenforceable by the police. You can't, you know, according to, to the state law, you can't ticket a car for under 25 miles an hour unless they're in a school zone.
Yeah.
So until they're doing 36 on some of these streets, this is ridiculous.
Yeah.
I mean, they need this, the legislature needs to change this law.
It is ridiculous. I mean, to your point, you're right, it's 20, 20, even if it says, even if it's marked 15 miles an hour unless it's in a, unless it's in a school zone, it's not legally enforceable. Much like the signage that you see, you know, on streets that actually restrict access during certain hours. You can do that on a township road, but when it comes, you can't restrict access to and from a state highway. So those signs are basically, because a lot of people wanted one-way streets, or limited hours of access, and in fact is they are not enforceable. So the options that we have are limited, speed bumps being, you know, certainly one of the options, and stop sign enforcement and speed enforcement. You know, and unfortunately, it's very difficult, it's very difficult to control people's behavior. And even if you had a stop sign and enforce a stop sign at a certain intersection for, you know, if you were there for a week, and you issued tickets, you issued 50 tickets or whatever it might be, two weeks later, they would be right back the way it was. People, it's impossible to control people's behavior. And a lot of, unfortunately, a lot of people are, are inconsiderate when it comes to driving not only through their own neighborhood, but other people's neighborhoods as well. So very, it's going to be a very tough year ahead, I think. So this is just one attempt to try to be proactive. Hopefully, we'll have some success. And, you know, I think, as we've all discussed, I think the goal, the primary goal is to get through the year, get through this project, at least with no one being injured or no fatalities. I'm going to have a lot of inconvenience, and a lot of frustrate, a lot of frustration, but the goal is to make sure that there's nobody that's injured or no fatalities as a result of this bridge closing. So anybody else have any, I'm sorry, I kind of monopolized this.
No, not at all. It's just worth reminding everybody in our, in our, our region that the Eagle Road Bridge was closed for a year. And that year seemed to take a year, but it, it finished, the project worked out. It wasn't nearly as bad as everybody thought it was going to be. I, I, I think putting these speed bumps into the various neighborhoods, if anything, it can just help us funnel the traffic to the roads where they belong, to the bigger roads that are wider, that have too many, you know, houses right on them. And, and I've, I've a higher degree of confidence that we will alter people's behavior. People will change the way they drive when they remember the third or fourth time that they're late for something because the Ardmore Avenue Bridge is closed. And I'm not as concerned about our neighbors as I am about those folks who just use our, our town as a cut-through. And when this bridge is out, people are going to change their, they're going to change their driving habits, they're going to pick another way to get from the north to the south, the south to the north, and, and they may very well permanently change those, those routes. So I don't think it's going to be as bad as we.
I hope you're right. I'm, I always prepare for the worst and hope for the best. And so I'm skeptical because there's so much more traffic on Ardmore Avenue. How was the, what was Eagle Avenue, Eagle Road traffic there?
Initially, we had the usual problems, just as we did with the East Benova Road Bridge, but after.
But that doesn't have the traffic that Ardmore Avenue.
Very, a considerable amount.
The other, the other complication is that we have, you have Aqua and Pico. I mean, you can't go on, on any street in, anywhere in Lower Marion or Harford Township where there's not a detour. And Aqua, and particularly Pico, is tearing up every street there is. I mean, it's just amazing. Everywhere you go, there's work. And, and even Ardmore Avenue, I just talked to a Pico guy today about Ardmore Avenue, and the fact that they still have work to do there on Ardmore Avenue in both Harford and Lower Marion Township. And I implored him to, you know, when they do, in fact, pave that street, repave that street within 45 to 60 days if they're completing their work, that they do that work at night, because that should be done at night. We don't want to have a major artery being repaved at any time during the day. So, anyway. Anybody else have any questions on this resolution? If not, please call a roll.
Mr. DiMillo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Thank you all for that. Next motion?
Mr. President, I don't know if we read the second part of that motion.
Oh, yeah, we need to do that.
Motion authorizing staff to spend up to $20,000 on temporary traffic mitigation measures in and around the area affected by the Ardmore Avenue Bridge closure.
Second?
Seconded by Commissioner Siegel. Any discussion? Thank you for finding the money, Amy. Appreciate it. Please call a roll.
Mr. DiMillo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Agenda Item Number 15, Resolution Number 2145-2019, multimodal grant application Ardmore Avenue-Harford Road pedestrian improvements.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt Resolution 2145, 2019, that the Board of Commissioners does hereby designate David R. Berman, Township Manager, as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the Township and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist obtaining a multimodal transportation fund program, MTF, grant in the amount of $725,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the various improvements to enhance pedestrian safety and facilitate access to the Ardmore Avenue Station of the Norristown High Speed Line.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Mr. DiMillo. Just to add some color to this, I understand this grant is, is not a matching grant. It was disappointing when we learned from PennDOT that when they were doing the College Avenue Bridge, they also redid the intersection of Harford and College Avenue at the same time. It's not the case with the Ardmore Avenue Bridge, unfortunately. They're just doing the bridges themselves, and they, they're not reconstructing or redoing, upgrading the intersection itself, which needs upgrading in terms of safe pedestrian passage. So this is essentially a township, we're taking this on as a township applying for this grant to try to upgrade the signaling and pedestrian access to the Ardmore Station, which there currently is, it's not a safe situation. So hopefully we'll be successful in getting this grant. And this, this work would not be done, if we're successful in getting the grant, would not be done until the actual bridge is completed, which is projected to be a year from, or 338 days from next Monday. So Chuck, do you want to add anything from engineering perspective or?
I believe you said, Commissioner, that there is no match to this at all. So the 725 is, is simply the grant. Township's not responsible for a match, which is typically what this grant is a 30% match.
How do we, how do we qualify for no match?
Actually, the project that you received the grant for last year, I believe, the Mill and Caricon parking ride there, that was also similar. There was no match on that. And that was just something DCE decided to do over the past couple of years.
That's great.
And Tony, for me to span.
Like when we don't have to put money up. Thank you. Any, any questions on this resolution? Any additional discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. DiMillo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Agenda Item Number 16, Agreement Comprehensive Plan Consultant.
Mr. Chairman?
Exciting news. Commissioner DiMillo?
I'd like to authorize the Township Manager, upon Township Social Slayer Review, to enter into professional service agreement with Urban Research and Development Corporation for the purpose of providing an implementable, action-oriented, 10-year municipal comprehensive plan.
Second?
Moved by Commissioner DiMillo, seconded by Commissioner Oliva. Any discussion or any additional color Kelly might want to add, or Steve you might want to present to the public?
Well, we, you know, we had a process. We interviewed different vendors, and we all agreed on this, on the urban research and development. And we're, we're excited that we're moving forward with this plan.
So what's, the timing is, what, 14 months? Is that what, is what it is, David, 14 months? Or?
It's 14 months, but once we get the process started, we'll have a better idea how long all the public input will take, how long the surveys will take. I would, I would put a better estimate on 14 to 18 months.
And Kelly, maybe you could give us some color in terms of the process and how the public will be involved, have the opportunity to speak, and the various, you know, constituent groups that will be involved as well.
Sure. For, well, a lot of this will be decided and with the, with the consultants. But, but generally, once we meet with them, we will identify all of the stakeholders, everyone that should be involved, and different groups that, that really deserve, you know, special input. Not deserve, but will help encompass the whole township and really give a good idea of what is needed, what is wanted, and where the residents here and business owners want to be and want the township to be in the future. Once those groups are narrowed down, we'll, you know, start doing the surveys, we'll have public meetings, we'll get those groups together, and, you know, really help, you know, make this plan the best it can be for everyone.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions or discussion? We had a couple of false starts, so it's nice to see that we're now going to be moving forward. So if there's no questions or discussion, please call a roll.
Mr. DiMillo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Agenda Item Number 17, Purchases at the Stadium. Here, Commissioner.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of 7,000 square feet of rubberized flooring, 10% color fleck, with four feet by 10-foot stadium logo design, the Sports Floors Direct Incorporated of Laguna Hills, California, in the amount of $15,420.47, submitting the lowest responsible quote.
Second?
Moved by Commissioner Wexler, seconded by Commissioner Hart. Any questions or discussion on this purchase? Please call a roll.
Mr. DiMillo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Agenda Item Number 18, Contract Awards, Parks and Rec Hilltop Field Parking Lot Improvements.
Mr. President, make a motion to award the Hilltop Field Parking Lot Improvement Contract recontoring, repaving, and striping of both the existing paved lot and the adjacent stone lot to Guestler Construction Company Media, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $91,500, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second?
Moved by Commissioner Wexler, seconded by Commissioner Hart. Just to, this is a match, this does require a 15% match, is that correct, Amy? And so our portion of the $91,500 would be $13,725. Is that correct, Amy?
Does require a match, yes.
Okay. Just to clarify, there is a match required in this particular award. Any other questions or comments? Please call a roll.
Mr. DiMillo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Agenda Item Number 18, Contract Awards, Parks and Rec Hilltop Field Parking Lot Improvements.
Mr. President, make a motion to award the Hilltop Field Parking Lot Improvement Contract recontoring, repaving, and striping of both the existing paved lot and the adjacent stone lot to Guestler Construction Company Media, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $91,500, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second?
Moved by Commissioner Wexler, seconded by Commissioner Hart. Just to, this is a match, this does require a 15% match, is that correct, Amy? And so our portion of the $91,500 would be $13,725. Is that correct, Amy?
Does require a match, yes.
Okay. Just to clarify, there is a match required in this particular award. Any other questions or comments? Please call a roll.
Mr. DiMillo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Agenda Item Number 18, Contract Awards, Parks and Rec Hilltop Field Parking Lot Improvements.
Mr. President, make a motion to award the Hilltop Field Parking Lot Improvement Contract recontoring, repaving, and striping of both the existing paved lot and the adjacent stone lot to Guestler Construction Company Media, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $91,500, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second?
Moved by Commissioner Wexler, seconded by Commissioner Hart. Just to, this is a match, this does require a 15% match, is that correct, Amy? And so our portion of the $91,500 would be $13,725. Is that correct, Amy?
Does require a match, yes.
Okay. Just to clarify, there is a match required in this particular award. Any other questions or comments? Please call a roll.
Mr. DiMillo?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Okay, turning to Agenda Item Number 19, which is a continuation of the Citizens Forum. Any one in the audience want to speak on either an agenda or non-agenda item? Okay. Now turn to new business. Any new business come before this board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, you and I have had discussions on how this township can improve in what we do for the environment. And we've made a lot of progress, this township has, in the last five years. But you and I discussed going a little further and we decided that we would be the second municipality in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to ban plastic bags. And the problem is, is that when I wrote this ordinance, and you and I talked about this, the governor, and I'll just read this real quick, Governor Tom Wolf has signed legislation barring Pennsylvania municipalities from taxing or banning the sale of distribution of plastic bags and other containers, wrappings, and bags. The measure Wolf signed Friday is a 69-page budget-related bill that lawmakers unveiled two days ago. A three paragraph provision prohibits municipal bans or taxes on plastic bags or packaging for one year while legislative agencies study the economic and environmental impact. Senate Republican Leader Jack Korman of Center County said he wanted, he wanted the provision because his district includes a plastic manufacturer and a township considering a fee on plastic bags. Well, I have an ordinance that I would like to hand out, even though we can't do it now, maybe with, it's a one-year ban, so I don't know how we could do this when the ban's lifted. We, we can reintroduce it? Or can we just?
You can reintroduce it in a year. That's probably the preferable method of doing it because, you know, you have a municipal election this year, so if you tried to pass something and say it wasn't effective for another year, you'd basically be tying the hands of some, possibly a new board, hopefully not, but possibly it could be some new board.
What about banning straws as a starting point?
I think that's a great idea. It doesn't match in straws, that's a good, good point. Can we, can we ban straws?
Yeah, I believe you could, as long as it was, I'm sorry.
I mean, I think, I think you certainly can ban straws, and I think if we can get the language that Narberth has done that within the last year, so I don't even think we would need to really do any heavy lifting in terms of language. You could just pull exactly what their, what their language is. And that, you could put that on the agenda for August.
Do they, is Narberth, do you know Narberth allows for, I assume there's like a phase-in period of six months or something like that?
They phased it in, they educated their merchants. They also provided, and some municipalities in New Jersey did this as well. Some provided reusable bags, a one-time giveaway of reusable bags. Some of the supermarkets gave out recyclable bags, reusable bags with their logos on it. And, you know, according to a couple of municipalities in Jersey, it's working out well.
Yeah.
And, and just, just let me go over a couple of things if I may, Commissioner. There's 15 harmful effects of plastic bags. I just want the public to understand why Andy and I thought this was so important. Plastic bags kill about 100,000 animals annually. Many animals, including whales, dolphins, turtles, penguins and dolphins ingest plastic bags as they mistake them for food. Sea turtles mistake plastic floating bags for jellyfish. These sea turtles risk extinction, partly because of consuming excessive amount of plastic. So obviously they can't digest the plastic and they're dying. And I won't read everything, but I'll go over the 15 points though. The, the second one was plastic bags are non-biodegradable. Plastic bags are made from petroleum products. Plastic food storage bags have toxic chemicals. Toxic chemicals are released during plastic manufacturing. Massive accumulations of plastic bags blocks, blocks drainage system. Plastic bags are the main cause of the Great Pacific Garbage Patch. 93% of Americans age six years and above test positive for BPA. That's a, I'm not going to read this right. B-I-S-P-H-E-N-O-L, doctor, can you? What is that? It's a chemical compound that is used in the manufacture.
You're on your own here, Steve.
You weren't paying attention. Plastic bags expose children to lung complications. Plastic bag chemicals can affect reproduction of women. Plastic bags can, can increase the risk of prostate cancer in men. Plastic bags result in the pollution of groundwater. And number 13 is plastic, plastic pollution disrupts the natural food chain. By 2050, the oceans will have more waste plastics than fish. A low of water is used, it says here, a low of water is used in the manufacturer, it must be a lot, in the manufacture of plastic bags. So, I think that it would be, it would be great if this township and this board would, would agree to, at the end of the year, banned, reintroduce this and, and ban plastic bags in Harreford Township. Now, the straws, I mean, we could probably do that in August.
I don't know, Dan, could you research Narberth and maybe the ordinance committee could, could give us?
Yeah, there's, there's also a separate issue that we can't really deal with, but the amendment that preempts plastic bags was put into, at the last minute, a budget bill. And Pennsylvania law strictly prohibits adding amendments to bills that are not germane to the main subject of that bill. Adding a plastic bag ban to a budget bill, to me, raises issues like that, and I can tell you that this Pennsylvania Supreme Court has consistently struck down legislation that does, that, that, that fails to be germane to that. My recollection is there was even one challenge from Senator Leach on that, that the Supreme Court upheld the challenge and struck provisions from the bill. So, a year from now, this may have wended its way up because it does, it goes through, you know, a shorter process than typical matters. But I have real doubts that this fits the germane requirement for an amendment. But I can also research Narberth in the meantime.
Yeah, on straws. I would agree, I think, I mean, it's, it was obviously a political decision made by both the governor and the Republican Senate Majority Leader who had the bag manufacturer in his district, so they, and obviously they all wanted to go home for summer break.
At the expense of the environment.
So, anyway, if we could research the straw, Dan, maybe be prepared to, that'd be great. Thanks.
Also, just let me add this, Andy, Philadelphia is also considering a ban on plastic bags.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Steve. Any other new business? Okay, well, Agenda Item Number 21, Other Business, start with Commissioner D'Amelio.
Thank you, Commissioner. Denny left, I wanted to congratulate him.
Commissioner, he apologized for leaving at a tree down on the 370 block of Darby Road.
Right thing.
He has done a great job since he's been the acting director, so I congratulate him. I also want to pass on my sincere condolences to the Panoni family. Dave lost his mom and, you know, Dave, I'm sure is, is family right now, that's why he's not here tonight, so I wish him and his family all the best. Also, a young man died in, up my street, Anthony Yaccavelli, and unfortunately Anthony succumbed to his addiction. And he was a big help recently to Hada and the Kelly Music for Life. He helped, he helped renovate and build that area, that building. His family has asked that donations be sent in his memory to Kelly Music for Life. And his services are Thursday at John Stretchy's at 8:30. New trail opened, our new trail opened in Westgate. I want to thank the Westgate Hill Civic Association, really took the lead in this. They did a tremendous job, and all the volunteers that assisted with the trail, it was a great opening. Mr. Denny was there with recreation, and some Parks Board members were there. So, it was a wonderful, wonderful event. The Civic did a great job, they had water around for everyone, and it was just, just a wonderful opening. Am I missing any volunteers that helped, the gentleman that helped build it, Dan?
Steve Thomas was the professor.
Steve Thomas, right, right. He was good. So, I urge everyone who wants to take a nice walk in the nature, that's really like nature in the, in the woods, it's pretty neat. I was going to ask Dan if he can give us an update on the Walnut Hill-Glendale update, that intersection that Dave and I and some of the residents met with PennDOT, and they gave the approval. You know anything about this?
Yeah, we, we met last week about that, where there's some modifications we have to talk about, we want to meet Panoni down, that there were some questions raised as far as the entrance and exit, whether the triangle would be painted. But in context of how it is designed, we just, we feel a couple tweaks are necessary. I think you're aware of that.
Right, and one of the tweaks was to make the island a little smaller, and coming out of Walnut Hill Lane, allow cars to make a right or a left.
Yes, that's correct.
Right.
We, since Panoni did the design, we want to get together with, with them before we make any changes.
When will that be?
Well, I'll talk to Chuck after the meeting, and we'll, we'll get it figured out.
Good, okay. Thank you. If you, if you could let me know what your findings are, and then, you know, if we need to meet there with some of the residents, we could do that, Chuck. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Aliva?
I just want to say, great job by Danny Mariani. Danny has worked for us for a long time. I actually went to high school with, with Danny. Good guy, hard worker, and he's been doing a great job for Harreford Township, and I'm glad to see him excel and be, be the director. Other than that, have a great summer. Turn it over to you.
Just to follow up on, on the Ardmore Avenue Bridge stuff, that will be closing next week, been long anticipated. I, I would just want to say I share a lot of Commissioner Lewis's concerns, but I would encourage everyone to watch the YouTube meeting, the YouTube tape of the, the meeting we had in April with PennDOT officials and police officials. You know, Harreford Township, we are, we are committed to doing everything we possibly can to make this as, well, it will be inconvenient, but to make it as, 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 as safe for all the residents as possible. There will be extra patrols and everybody will be involved. And I, and I just, you know, I, I say this to a lot of people, you know, if, the, the bridge needs, the bridges both need to be replaced. They were, they were built in 1927 and 1935, and if you, if you go and you get off the Seppti train station in Ardmore Avenue and walk up the stairs, and get to the top of the stairs, and you don't believe the, the, the bridge needs to be repicked, replaced, I, I think you wouldn't be watching where you're going. So, while this is going to be an extremely inconvenient thing, it is an important infrastructure improvement that needs to be made, and it needs to be made now rather than later, rather than PennDOT pushing it down the road. So I'd ask everyone to just try to be neighborly, be considerate when you're driving, and be respectful of, of those around you and all of your neighbors who live on, who live on those streets. I, I did want to just point out, you know, July 4th at Harreford Township is, is, is a nice day, we have neighborhood celebrations, and I want to thank all the volunteers in the Third Ward, whether at Oakmont Fire Company, at Grassland Park, or at Paddock Park for their festivities, or at Moorewood Park for the festivities they threw. There's a lot of people in Harreford Township who volunteer a lot of their time, energy, and resources to make sure that everyone has neighborhood celebration, and I think it's part of what makes our, our town special. And I want to thank those volunteers in the Third Ward that, that had involved. It was a hot day, and the Oakmont fire trucks were greatly appreciated by everyone involved. And then just a reminder that the final trail run at the Crick is July 31st on Wednesday night, 7 o'clock. Everyone is invited to attend, so thank you.
Mr. Siegel?
It's a perfect segue into what I was going to discuss, which is that at July 4th, the Paddock Pharm Civic Association mentioned again their need for volunteers. Our community groups, whether it's the community groups, whether it's our volunteer fire companies, need volunteers. And it can be as little as, you know, an hour a month or something for a community group to as much time as residents devote to it. But the volunteers are needed for these groups. It makes the days very special. You know, it, it takes a lot of work to put on a July 4th celebration in Paddock with all of the different things that go on, from arranging the events, to the food, to the fire company, and they need help. The Paddock Pharm Civic Association is holding a meeting on July 14th, this Sunday, at 4 o'clock at Nolan Painting, for people who are interested in volunteering. So I urge people to attend. If you can't, you can contact them through their Facebook page, or contact me, and I will forward the information to them. But we do need volunteers. The other thing is that we need to also keep our eyes open, because there were some people who were less than responsible with fireworks on the holiday, and it did damage some areas in Paddock. So if you see something that is not right, please notify, please call 911, because in most cases, we have no way to know who did it, and it falls on all of us for those costs. And it, so please always keep your eyes open and notify the police when you see something. Better to do that and determine what it is than to ignore it, and then we all pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Siegel, Commissioner McGarrity?
Yes, I'd like to address a few of the people who have left, but they'll hear me on TV, hopefully. I'd like to thank Lee Heston from Public Works and Richard Dockerty, gone but never to be forgotten, our past Public Works Director, for being here tonight for Danny Mariani swearing in. Danny was there for theirs, and so was Public Works. And it proves two things, that our employees have wonderful employment in this township. A lot of them have 30 and 40 years in. I'm talking about trash truck drivers and everybody in the township, police officers, 30, 40, look at Viola, I think he's got 52 in. But anyway, with wonderful bosses and supervision. Just to show you the employees we talked about, we all have, they all have at least 30 to 40 years employment here in Harreford Township. And just look at our new superintendent hired, right here, Dave Berman, just a few weeks ago, I believe he was at age 22. So Dave, you have a good chance of making 50 years here and beat everybody out. So, that's a, that's what I have to say, I'm going to come up with a couple of these things and, for the next few months. I got a few months to go here, so I'm going to bring up a few things about some good people, and Harreford Township certainly, forget the politics for a minute, but certainly is a wonderful place to live, it's a wonderful place to work, and it's got the best supervision you could ask for. Thank you.
Commissioner Hart?
Thank yous to the Penfield Civic Association and the Brookline Fire Company for staging a very successful 4th of July celebration at the Grange. Everybody had a great time, it's a longtime tradition at the Grange, and appreciate their help. And I also wanted to thank Caitlin Piazza and her committee who worked with Tim Denny to pick the most appropriate equipment to be placed at Chatham Glen. We're looking forward to having that in the fall, hopefully. Thank you, that's all I have.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes, just a few thank yous here as well to the Hilltop Civic Association. They conducted their annual July 4th parade without the assistance of the Denny family this year, who I guess were away. We missed our live singing of the National Anthem by his daughter. But they do a great job, and Mr. Siegel pointed out the need for volunteers, it's, it's high. The ranks are dwindling at both there and the fire departments. I'd also like to thank both fire departments in that area, both Bon Air Fire Company, Manoa Fire Company, for participating in the parade, as well as our police department, provided security there. And also, I'd like to thank our police and Public Works for the work they're doing on a major project along Vermont Road and Glendale Road, water replacement there, traffic, it's a high-traffic area, both in the morning and the afternoon, a lot of contention, especially with the heat, and just their presence has been a great enforcement. I'll also congratulate Mr. Mariani, he's done a great job. And I'd like to echo Mr. D'Amelio's sentiments and offer my condolences to the Panoni family. Chuck Panoni, founder, is an icon in Philadelphia history. Firm is, I don't know, 1,200 people by now, I think, a bit more than 1,200 people. But Mrs. Panoni, not to be forgotten in the shadow, was one of the volunteers that we talked about, and that was very, very active on the Harreford Township Adult School and the Meals for Wheels program in this township. Every year, I had the privilege of attending the end-of-the-year dinner at her house for all the adult school volunteers and teachers. It's a great, great affair. She is gracious, a gracious host, and was a gracious volunteer for years, so our condolences on all of us to her for her great volunteering effort over the last 30 years in this township. She's, she was one of those people that is behind the scenes, always working hard, and they're a private family, so it doesn't get said very often, but she's one of those quiet people that was behind the scenes and gave a lot, a lot of time to the adult school over the years in the Meals on Wheels program. So you don't see them very much, they're not high-profile, but very important when they walk into your house, and when they give those instructions that we can all go to at the adult school, which is one of those great organizations we have in a township for mostly seniors, but a great program nonetheless, and she was a staunch advocate and longtime, longtime volunteer there, so our condolences for her. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, thanks. I, I had, I had the great pleasure, once again, of presiding over the bike decorating contest at South Armored Bedlam Alliance Annual July 4th Party at Elwell. And it's great. I get to give out free first-place awards, and I lose about 900 votes from all the other parents that are, that are at the event. But, but it was a great event, and they do a great, they do, they do great work, and have for years. And I echo the sentiments of my colleagues, but I call out to all of us in the community to, to help these community organizations, because they, in particular on July 4th, they make this such a great township, because we don't have some massive, you know, crowded, hot thing where people stand around for hours waiting for a fireworks display. All the different neighborhoods all have different, have different events, and it's one of the things that makes our town so unique and such a treat to live in and be part of. My other comment is, I guess it's more global. We lost a great Pennsylvanian this, this week. Lee Iacocca passed away, and everybody knows him as the CEO of Chrysler and ubiquitous on television in the 80s and the 90s, but people may not know that he's actually an Allentown native, and they may also not know that in 1991, he had been asked by Governor Casey to accept the U.S. Senate position when John Hines tragically died in that accident in April of 1991. And he, he turned it down, but, and it would be interesting to see what Pennsylvania might have been like if, if he had, he had served as our, as our senator. But his, his family took out a full-page ad in the New York Times just this Sunday, and I want to, I want to quote it. At this time right now, we in America are looking at something happening on our southern border that for so many of us is so appalling. The Iacocca family took out a full-page ad, and they wrote this quote. "All the success I've had, all the jobs I've saved, and the lives I've influenced would never have happened if my parents had been turned away at Ellis Island." So, I want us all to think about that. Nobody knows who the children are going to be of those people right now who are trying so desperately to get into America, and one of those children may very well turn out to be Lee Iacocca. So, just want people to think about that. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Just two items. Number one, I want to thank Dave and Amy for a very successful shredding event. I got a number of compliments from Fifth Ward residents. It went flawlessly. Everybody loved the program and look forward to the one, I think, in October that will be held at the Cooper Towns Elementary School. Also, for the public's benefit, I've had conversations with Commissioner Siegel, McCluskey, and Holmes about a follow-up public meeting with PennDOT, which we're trying to schedule for some time. We're hoping to do it sooner than later, but August is obviously a bad time for most people to, with vacations and so forth. So, we're trying to get the same group together that we had in April and have another public meeting sometime after Labor Day, which we'll make the public aware of. But we're going to have another forum where people can come and voice their concerns and make suggestions. One of the things that PennDOT did say in our April meeting was that they, they wanted, they didn't want to make any decisions with regard to adjusting traffic lights or anything until four or six weeks passed, so they could see how the traffic patterns established. And so, the timing for this will be good and, and given an opportunity, again, for the public to provide their input and suggestions and express their concerns, and hopefully, collectively between PennDOT, our police department, and this board, we can do our best to try to mitigate the impact of this, this closure. So, stay tuned. We'll probably announce a date shortly, but again, probably shortly after Labor Day, we'll be holding another public meeting. One other comment? Commissioner?
Just, just, Commissioner Siegel brought up, does anybody see something to call the police? A lot of residents still say they don't know the number, so it's 911. It doesn't matter if, if you think it's an emergency or not.
If it's a cat in a tree, or?
911.
Right.
Right, chief?
That's correct. We, we've had a lot of people say they have a non-emergency, and they don't, don't know what number to call, and they feel funny dialing 911. But that is our non-emergency and emergency line. So, for any call involving the police, it is 911.
Thank you.
Emergency, non-emergency, not just a police.
Anything else? Nothing, we stand, stand adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you for being here.